You have to do something with that Vince, if you're looking at the recording question.
Yeah, it's kind of blocking everything.
Yeah. So I would like to start this regular meeting of the Norwich Planning Commission. We have a full agenda, but before we start with that, I would like to acknowledge and recognize some very sad and serious events that have happened over, really since our last meeting. And so I would, I would just ask for a brief moment of silence and then I'll open up the floor if anybody, anybody wants to speak to it. But I think it's important to recognize what's been going on that that really is very close to the planning commission and very, very significant. So we could just give it a, give it a moment. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak before we move on to the agenda? Ernie?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I, I, I miss Stuart because I'd known him for many, many years. And we were both off on the same side a lot and on opposite sides a lot, but he was a great person. And I think he was a real benefit to the town. I think he was a really good person to have as a, as a, to know and well, I, that's all I can say really. Just sorry he's not here.
Jeff?
Yeah, I want to also acknowledge Stu. And before I do that, I just want to say, Ernie, I'm sorry for your loss.
Thanks.
And with respect, with respect to Stu, he was a very good friend in recent years. And he wasn't afraid to take on the autocracy. And I'm trying to say things nicely. And most recently, along with Chris Katouki, he, he really put a lot of energy into things like promoting open meeting law, which our community rejected. And I had, as Vince knows and Rob Geer knows, that we, you know, I endured years of excoriation over open meeting law. Ernie knows the same. And I'm so thankful that Stu and others stood up to the autocracy to try and promote the law. Most recently, I also want to note, working with Stu to talk about the antisemitism, the racism and other policies that are being promulgated by folks in our nation. Together, we lamented what's been going on in the antisemitic realm, the racist realm, et cetera. And I, I truly miss Stu as someone who cares about people in the context of equality.
Yep. Thank you. And I would, you know, we also have Jack Kanden to mourn as well as someone who was close to these topics as well. So yet another. Chris?
No, I just want to say, just add to the fact that I, you know, Stuart was just another fabulous member of the community, you know, whether you agreed with him or not. He was willing to get in there, get into the trenches and I, I will, I will definitely miss him. But like anybody else, you may agree or may disagree, but it's just being part of a community.
Right. Yes, that's, that's a good message for, for us all is that it's, it's, it's good to care about things and it's good to participate and make your views known and try and get something that works. So with that in mind, I would take a motion to approve the agenda and then we'll talk it through.
So moved.
All right. Thank you. Any comments on the agenda as it's laid out? All right. Call the question. Everyone in favor of the agenda as spelled out?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
And one thing, just to, to follow up on the, the conversation with Stuart, and I think maybe Vince, if you can just note in the minutes that the select board, I mean, the planning commission will need to make an official request or statement to the select board for an appointment of a, of a new member. So how, and I, I expect, I expect they will know, obviously there's a vacancy, but I'll, I will make up an official notice to, to Marcia, asking for them to fill that vacancy. Okay. Do we have public comment for items not on the agenda?
Hey, Jan.
Yes.
I would like to know Peggy, Peggy Allen is in the audience.
Yeah, Peggy is there for item number five. Hi Peggy, Norwich Farmers Market. And if she's, if she's willing to sit through item number four, then, or three and four, then we will get to hers post haste.
Sir, I'm sorry. I should have, I should have said that. I didn't realize she was in there waiting. Is there any reason why we shouldn't move her up? If she doesn't want to wait?
Uh, no, no particular reason. I, I told her when I thought we'd get to it and if, if she's here early, we can certainly get to that early. Peggy, do you, do you know if anyone else is coming? I said, I thought it'd be about seven. Do you know of anyone else who's coming for, for your topic?
Yes, I think that Peter Raymond is going to join us, so I would, I don't need to get moved up. I'm happy to sit and listen. But thank you for the consideration.
Okay.
Is that Peter Raymond?
Okay. You all said, Ernie, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I was going to make a motion if she wanted to move up, but then I,
Okay.
She said she's, I, I think she, she wants to wait and that's.
Okay. So let's, I'll, correspondence, I did not, I did not have any comments to the correspondence. So if people have looked at that, there were a couple of the source protection plans from the two, from two water supplies. So Jeff?
Yeah, I'd like to address both the water supply questions and Lily's response to you. So I'm curious about the genesis of the water supply requests and how they're being coordinated. Is there one entity that's syncing with both the childcare center and King Arthur Bakery? It's odd that we're receiving both at the same time.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they were exactly on top of each other on the same time, or whether they just, I, I, I saw them over the course of the last month and a half and they ended up in this packet. I do not know of any specific request. As far as I know, they just, you know, they have a certain, I don't know what the requirement is, but on a regular basis, they need to report on their source protection plan. If, do you know the details of that? We didn't ask for it and I don't know if anyone did ask for it. And as far as I know, it's coincidental that they're in together.
Yeah, we serve clients with such things and that's what led me to ask, is there something being synchronized? So I'll leave it at that. So.
Yeah, not that, not that I am aware of. I know those were sent to the select board as well and Pam asked whether I wanted to include them in the, in the correspondence and I said, fine.
Can I move on to Lily's comments?
Sure. Yes.
Yeah, in your memo, your December 18 email, which included Lily's comments. How do I say this? In response to Jeff Goodrich's comments, it's around 2630 and Ernie's comments around 2956, the clerk's office has land records, blah, blah, blah. So before COVID came along, folks would arrive in the town and they would look at deed information, et cetera. And they didn't have to do it, make appointments, et cetera. So things are different subsequent to COVID. Whether we call it lockdown or some other thing, the fact is things are different and the question is why?
Is, I guess my question is also simply, does the, does the planning and zoning activity need something different? You know, is, is Kyle or Pam or, or the DRB or the PC hampered from doing their work by the current situation that, and then more broadly residents or applicants or other entities, but do, do we know of any problem from our perspective?
Well, so I can't speak to the planning commission and how it engages the records, but formerly folks would come into town, excuse me, come into Tracy Hall and they would have access to move records around and find what they want and make copies, et cetera. Things are drastically different from that paradigm. So private citizen, a surveyor, an applicant, no longer has the same liberty that he or she had prior to COVID.
So I, I guess I would take that as noted and the, you know, there, it's a conversation, if there's a problem, it's a conversation with the town clerk's office to make suggestions and, and trying to get what people need out of that office. I don't, I, I'm not, I'm not hearing a burning need from this group to, to change something as an official planning commission request. Which is why it's in the correspondence.
Jan, I appreciate that. But if, if at the end of the day, we're trying to address application requirements, applicants, staff issues, I, I think the question should be addressed by the planning commission to say, what has changed since pre-COVID that warrants a different construct?
Well, as you can see in my note, that's why I added the comment or the query to Kyle to say, Kyle, what's, what is, what are your needs as the, as the acting ZVA from this office and, and do you need things to change? So I think that's, that is another useful perspective. I guess I'm, I'm not, it's one thing to say is something different than it was four years ago. It's another to say, is it, does it meet our needs? Does it do what it needs to do? Is the town clerk's office operating in a way that does its job, whether it's different than it was four years ago or not?
Well, Jan, so I have personal firsthand experience of trying to make applications for Act 250 and other permit requests where I can't go to the town and find the deed reference. I can't call the town because the town says legitimately, perhaps, I can't give you a deed reference because there's risk associated with this. So now I have to wait a number of days, whereas before I could do it same day. So there is a, there is a very different paradigm that exists for applicants. And if the planning commission is going to think about the DRB paradigm, what it means to make up the town, things have changed. And look, not good or bad. I just want to be honest and say it's very different. And here's why.
So I would ask the group, do we, we, we can't go deeper into it out of a correspondence note. So we either say that it's worthy of an agenda item at a future meeting or, or not. I think that would be the next, the next step. If we would like to dig into this deeper, we should put it on the agenda. Ernie?
I, I, I was sort of torn about saying anything about Lily's response because I'm not quite sure what she's talking about what I said, because I more or less, you know, just accept whatever her offices got going. I, I use the, I have to use the records frequently also. And it, it's only a matter of that I wish they would just speed up the process of digitizing these records and making them available online. Bonnie had rejected that particular, she did not want to put them online. And that's her choice as a town, town clerk. And again, for me, coming to the town hall, giving, just gives me an excuse to say hi to the people so, that are there. So I don't really care, at least for Norwich. I mean, other places I do care. All I just want to say is just encourage them to, if, whatever they're doing, just speed it up. That's all I've got to say. I mean, I think, I don't have a problem with making appointments or, or any of that stuff. I mean, I, I mean, I know it's a pass off for Jeff because he's got to probably be in there way more than I do. But as an attorney, it's no big deal. And if I had, if I, even if I wasn't, if I, even if as an attorney I was using it, I'd just make an appointment for doing a number of searches all at once. I don't know if you are familiar with title searches. I mean, you sort of say something to the effect that you're not really familiar with this stuff. So.
So I guess what I'd ask in the interest of time is to, to say, all right, let's, I'm gonna table it for now. I'll, I'll talk to Jeff as we're making agendas for coming meetings and we can decide whether there's something specific that needs to get put on an agenda. And we can, we can move on from there. Okay, let's, let's run through some of the chair notes and then we'll get to the farmers market topic. So you saw in the packet, there's a, a letter from the listers around, it's actually, it was forwarded from, from Cheryl that is a year plus old or something. It was a, it was a request for, there was an opinion asked whether or not a consolidation of two lots, a merger of two lots required a permit, similar or a subdivision permit. And it was Rod's opinion, which I believe is, is pasted in that note, that yes, it did require a permit. And then that letter is specifically a legal response to that opinion from Rod saying, no, we disagree, a merger is totally, is the opposite of a subdivision and should not require a permit. So the, the listers were putting that back on the table because they had never received any sort of reply to that legal letter that they sent back. So I, I put that, I received the letter kind of out of the blue from Cheryl. I put it in, in the packet and I'm noting it here. I don't, I don't think we should discuss it in any depth here, but we should simply say, ask, should we put it on a, on a future agenda? So that's what I would put in front of the group. Ernie?
I'm just, I, I just think, and keep in mind, I'm a listener too. That it, it's, there are, there is, there are, we don't, it, it's, it's not that it matters to the listeners, whether it requires it or not, but what seems to have caused some misunderstanding is that apparently our regulations seem to lead to an interpretation that it does require it. I just am going to suggest that when we get to, this might be one of the first things we reconcile when we start revising the regulations, so that it goes along with what the states, whatever the state mandates, which I'm pretty sure Jack is correct, by the way, I, you know, I take his advice, even as an attorney, he's someone that, it, 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 you know, gives me advice, people did give me advice. So I would trust his opinion on it. And, and I think we just have to make the regulations reflect the reality of what the state does. So this might not answer Cheryl, well, it would help answer Cheryl's thing in that, that if she, I'm not quite sure how this plays, because she's brought this up, but I don't understand how the listers have to deal with it. You know, I mean, it doesn't really matter if somebody owns two pieces of adjacent land or they merged them into one. The only, well, it does matter in that, yeah, I take that back. It does matter. Because each time ones merge, I mean, once, once you have, if you have two separate pieces and you want to, and you don't necessarily have anything built on them or anything, and you want to get lower your assessment, you could merge them and then they, somebody, you can merge them and then you, that lowers the, that would lower the overall tax bill. And that's where that affects the, the listers. Beyond that, I think it's, it's just a good idea to have the law comply with the state law.
Yeah. Chris?
Yeah, no, I'm agreeing with Ernie and it's absolutely true. This is one of the few towns and Spencer used to talk about this. Cheryl was going to join us, I don't know where she is. But Spencer had told us, we are one of the few towns in the state that taxes based on the subdivision itself. So there are people who are smart enough to say, okay, well, I own 10 acres and I bought it with, when it was, you know, two five acre parcel subdivided. And the tax is higher because of that. So there are people who are smart enough to say, I'm going to join those properties and get rid of the subdivision for that purpose. And it, but there is a statute that covers that you do not need to go through DRB review or anything else, that the, the person, a property owner has a right to merge their boundary in a two subdivision, said Cheryl, no. To merge it without having to go through DRB review. So to me, it's like, yeah, if we have to put this on the agenda and, and end this story, ones are for all. I mean, the state can come on and they can tell us or, or, you know, again, this town lawyers up every time we have one of these discussions that nobody knows what the answer is. Do we have a statute? Jack's told us where the statute is and it just needs to be done. I, I'm always amazed that we just always think, we always, we're just always talking, talking, talking about this stuff. And I always want to know, what is the next step to actually get it done? You know, I, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, I mean, in answer, in answer to that, and I think it's a good point as we start a new year and say, okay, how do we think through our tasks? You know, we should have a, a running list of proposed either topics or known changes for each of our, our three work products, the, the plan, the zoning bylaws and the subdivision regs that say these are buckets that we put things into as they come up. And then depending on urgency and depending on the number of things in the bucket, we say, all right, now's the time to, when we do redo the bylaws, we're going to pull those things up and we're going to say, oh yeah, we got a, a noise ordinance comment. We've got a signage question. We've got a consolidation, you know. So that clearly this goes in the bucket for the appropriate regulation. And to your point, Chris, it's what drives us to say, now's the time to do these three changes. And actually the, the farmers market one will be another example of this. Let me do Jeff and then Ernie.
Yeah, Jan, I get it. In our current culture, the rule of law doesn't matter. We need to defund the police to make it so. That said, our rules, our ordinances, we have subdivision regulations, site plan reviews, zoning, et cetera. I'm assuming that Rod looked at our ordinances, our regulations and said, based on our regulations, here's what's required. So I'd like to put that on an agenda in the near term to understand, this is what our regulations actually say. I don't care about what was previously said. What do our regulations say? And I want to understand if Rod, by the way, I'm not judging Rod, that's not my intent. So what do our regulations say? And to the extent he interpreted them properly, and I, I think highly of all the folks engaged in this, this memo, if, if you will, the attorneys engaged in this memo. This might be a good example to say, here's an example of what our regulations don't address and how might we approach it going forward?
Agreed. Ernie?
I was just going to say, just let's put this in one of the buckets right now. I know, I agree, put it in a bucket right now because we know it needs fixing. I mean, this has been hanging out there for a while. And, you know, you go down.
Sounds like Jeff is, Jeff is asking to confirm it needs fixing before. Just to, is there conflict? I'm, I'm, if we believe, for starters, we, we believe Jack Kanden's opinion that the state says, as Chris said, you don't need a permit to merge, then the flip side of that is Rod's opinion that our regulations don't agree with that. So there's no point in putting it in the bucket if it turns out we, you can look at our regs and say, yeah, they already agree with the state.
All what I'm saying is, is that, that, that our regulations say the wrong thing. And we got to fix that. So whoever, you know, and we could, we can, we can, we, we know where the problem is because Jack has circled it. We know, you know, we could do that at the next meeting or whenever it is, however, you know, we could just say, this has got to get changed and we're changing it by fiat and have it changed and we're done. I mean, it's not a lot of language that's going to be required to fix it.
Okay.
I mean, we just strike the regulations that require it.
Okay. Bob?
I guess I'd just be concerned, even if a regulation doesn't exist, there's sort of a precedent that's been set of doing this review process that doesn't need to be there. So maybe it needs at least a, a statement or something like that. So I think even if, I mean, either clearly calling out that, that a rule, that there is no regulation statute requiring consolidation to be brought before the DRB, even if that doesn't exist, we, we should, I guess, at least clearly address it or say something, just so that it doesn't stand as a precedent.
That's what I'm saying and I agree with, with Bob.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. So this is, this is sort of naked. So what, what do the rules say? Let's put it on an agenda, let's pick at it together and let's address it accordingly.
Okay. So, so noted to put it on an agenda item as soon as possible with a little bit of, with a, with a check on our current regs to, to look at how they comply. Chris?
Well, again, more importantly, this comes back to not just our regs. It goes back, it's kind of like the whole thing with the PUC may or may not make changes to 5001. If they do, we have to update. So what Jack and a lot of other attorneys have been saying is that the state now, there's a state statute that's doesn't, either it exists or it doesn't exist, that says, no, people can merge properties without having to be, you know, for a town to usurp state law is a problem. So if this town is making people go through a step that is not required, then I'm surprised more people haven't complained about it. And I think they are. And I think that's why the group wrote that letter. So it seems to me more importantly, not what the Norwich regs say, but what the state regs say. And, and by the way, when Cheryl, I wish Cheryl had joined us because the, And, and by the way, uh, when Cheryl, I wish Cheryl had joined us because the, um. The, Ernie, what's it called? The, the, the tax, the. Property evaluation people.
Assessment, yes, this is, this will impact.
Property evaluation people will come in and tell you that, you know, it's pretty straightforward.
The townwide reappraisal is under, is happening now and it's going to be finished by April. So, you know, we really kind of have to get on it because it's going to require adjusting what the assessors are setting, are, are, are saying.
Okay. So we will put it on, uh, an agenda as soon as possible. Jeff?
Yeah, I just want to comment, Chris, I appreciate your chagrin. But looking at things like, uh, our select board. Planning commission members, other committee members intentionally thwarting open meeting law and lying about their actions. Should suggest to you that what you're concerned about is a little bit less important. Nonetheless, I agree completely. This town has a record for who cares about the law. Thank you for, thank you all for trying to look at what the law says and how we modify our regulations accordingly.
Right. That's the example. That's the example we wanted to set. So I will get that on a, on an agenda item ASAP. Uh, the next note, um, is simply a, an informational. Uh. For the next meeting. Uh, and this is a solar project. Uh, it came across within the last month. This is out on New Boston Road. Uh, Aaron Lamperty, uh, has proposed it. He's got, um. An application and a letter for preferred citing or a request for a preferred citing letter, 150 KW project. Uh, up the hill a bit on New Boston Road. So that's, we don't, we, we won't talk about it at all today. Um, he wasn't available to, to be at this meeting. So we agreed that. The February regular meeting would be when we spoke to that project. So. We will look at it. That doesn't mean we'll decide in February. We may decide to, to kick it to the solar citing subcommittee. That will be up to us, but it, it is most definitely on the agenda for February 13th. Ernie?
Is that why we, we don't have a letter for that?
Correct. We don't, it's not in the packet. There's a, there's a whole. Application with drawings and slope analysis and so forth and view sheds. Um, that will be in the packet for the, for the meeting. We're going to look at.
Okay.
Where, where it's on the agenda. I just wanted to make people aware if you, if you heard of that project or that application. It is on the radar, uh, and it was simply that Aaron wasn't available for tonight's meeting. Okay? Um. And then on the, on the maps activity, I did want to. Uh, report what I, what I think is, is, is progress and, and, and something hopeful that we can work with. Um, I took, um. Pete Fellow's Two Rivers's, uh, suggestion or followed up on it to. To look into the possibility of using the group. Uh, that hosts our. Parcel map, our interactive parcel map and to say, is there an option for them adding overlays to that map? For the town specific zoning maps, everything from the zoning districts to the ridge line scenic and so forth. Um, so when I reached out to, uh, it was actually Adam at Nimrack, I suppose it's quicker to say, um. He was extremely responsive and helpful and looked immediately in the. GIS compatible files under Norwich and already had overlays. In the, in compatible format for our four zoning districts. Rural residential village, so forth, um, and the aquifer protection zone up on, uh, Route five. Uh, and so. He said, yep, sure. I, I already have these and he, he showed me the, the outlines of the overlays. And I could put them as, uh, layers on your, on your interactive tax map. Uh, I would need the Lister's permission to do that since that's, that's who my contract is with or something like that. So I, I checked with, uh. The, uh, the town manager and the Listers, uh, and actually Cheryl today, uh, sent Adam a note. Uh, saying it was, uh, it was okay to, what I'm proposing, and this is, is for your. Uh, thoughts, what I'm proposing is simply to do. An initial experiment, since we have data available. We have these five overlays that are already in the right format. We, all we have and all I have to do is send Adam a follow-up to Cheryl's email and say. Yep, put them on. Um, then as an experiment. He will create, he'll put that data on overlay as overlays to the text map. Then we can go in and, and look and look at the functionality of the viewer and the, you know, the accuracy or can you? How does it show the interaction between a parcel and the boundary of some, uh, overlay? Basically, it's just an experiment with. Using that tool and that company as our host. Since we've already got the data in there, costs us nothing to check. If it then looks like. A good venue, a good way to do it. Then we can, we can talk about, okay. Um, certainly Pete Fellow said he's, he's perfectly able to take the other. Uh, the ridge line and the scenic and so forth and put them in a GIS format that then can. Become other overlays. So I, I, I'm quite, uh. Happy with that, that amount of progress or that possibility. Um, and I guess I would just put it out to the group as a proposal for the, for the experiment. I wouldn't go forward with any kind of. Proposals to contract with other overlays or even to make it official with Nimrack. But simply to test it and get some, get some ideas on whether it's going to work. Thoughts? Jeff?
Yeah, the town interactive map is, is pretty functional. And so if there's a possibility of simply adding zoning districts, great, simple. And to that end, uh, Two Rivers in Vermont Center for Geographic Information can also absorb it. Simple.
And I did see, and we'll, we'll get these other resources posted or at least links to them. As I'm, I'm working with Pam to try and get these in, in. Accessible and obvious places, but the, on the. Center for Geographic Information site, they have some fabulous. Maps, uh, including one, it's called the planning atlas or something like that, but you click on that and it has. The solar potential maps, the slope maps, uh, all, all the various things that relate to planning. That are, uh, you know, not specific town zoning districts and so forth, but a lot of things in Norwich. If you want to go look at the slopes, so forth, it's already on there. So anyway, there, there, there's some real nice. Information that's available, but if everybody's all right with that, then I will just, I will go forward with the experiment and what I will probably do. What I think makes sense, uh, is once we get it up and either we may put it on some. Um, you know, kind of restricted access, uh. Thing, uh, or, uh, you just have to know how to click the overlays on or something, but I can notify this group. Um. That it's active and how to hook onto it so that people can go on and look at it and experiment and say. Oh yeah, that works or that's a pain or, and I'll give us some feedback. So, so look for that in the, in the coming weeks. Okay? Uh, and then finally, uh, on the planning grant, affordable housing planning grant, New Boston Road. I went through the schedule, uh, with Jeff Lubel. To get us, uh, to an April submittal of that planning grant. Um, it's on the, and the sequence just quickly is it's on the select board agenda for tomorrow. Um, and that's real, they already spoke about it at a previous meeting and it was, there was some back and forth, but it was generally positive. No showstoppers, um. They will touch on it again tomorrow as long as that continues to be positive, then. Um, the subcommittee, uh, or we will hold a public hearing. There, you have to have a public hearing before the final submittal. So the proposal would be to have the final hearing. First, the public hearing, uh, first week in February. Um, which would be. And again, we, we talked about, we'll talk about this again with the subcommittees, but the idea is. Official. Activities of the subcommittee really need to be under the auspices of the full planning commission. So the public hearing would be. A warned meeting of the planning commission and a warned meeting of the subcommittee. Um. To hold the public hearing on that planning grant. If we do that first week in February. Then they roll any input from the hearing into the grant application. And have that ready for us for our February 13th meeting. So then we would discuss it then. If all looks well, it would get submitted to the select board out of our meeting on the 13th. And then that would leave the select board enough time, plenty of time, even before kind of March messiness, um. To approve. Submittal by April 1. So that is the timeline for that grant application. Okay? All right. So moving on to the agenda and we will get to the. First pithy agenda item, which is Normus Farmers Market. Um, and this is. What I would say is a early or a preliminary conversation about a, a proposed project. Um, that, um, I know Kyle and Peggy have been talking. Um, and Peter Raymond is on, uh, and hello, Peter. Uh, is on as the attorney for the Norwich Farmers Market, uh, group. Uh, and the very quick background, and we can ask Peggy questions as needed, but the very quick background is a proposal to. Um, move the farmer's market across the street. That's what we're talking, that, that the property across the street from the current farmer's market, which has been, as we know. For sale for quite a long time, six or seven years now, um, is, uh. A viable option and the proposal is to move the farmer's market, have parking, have. A, uh, pavilion, I guess, is, is what Peggy was calling it, a building that could be used for winter market. Sufficient parking, um, and so that's all. That's all specifics of a project that we don't have to deal with the specifics. That's not our job. To review that, but the current read by Kyle. Relative to the zoning regs is that if that project came up in front of the DRB. There would be problems because whereas the current farmer's market is in. Uh, one zoning district, that new, that property is rural residential. And the current allowed uses in rural residential, as you go down that list. Um, none of them clearly includes. Uh, everything that a farmer's market might be or what they might need to do with this, if they were going to rent. The building out at other times, um, how does that relate to permitted uses? So that's really the, the planning commission appropriate topic on the table here is, um. How might we, if, if we were thinking about this, is it something where you. Uh, amend the commission, conditional uses of, or propose, that would have to go to the select board, obviously. Uh, to add farmer's market to conditional use in a rural residential. Uh, that's just one option, uh, but that's, that is the, the topic on the table. And with that, I would open it up either. Peggy, you want to give more background or if commission members want to jump in?
Me, uh, if I, if I could, I think it might make sense to do a little bit of background. My, my name is Peggy Allen. Uh, I have a sheep farm with my husband up on Jericho Road. I've been a vendor at the Norwich Farmers Market. For more than seven years. I'm on the Norwich Farmers Market Board. And I am on the subcommittee that we created, um, to explore this possibility. We made a presentation, I made a presentation to the Norwich Farmers Market members, which are their vendors. At the annual meeting last April. Um, proposing that we pursue this property. I had done some preliminary research on act two fifty. And, um, I knew that it was zone rural residential, but it seemed like there might be. Possibilities that that could still move forward. I've had many, many conversations with the, the broker, um. Had talked with Vermont Land Trust, the Upper Valley Land Trust, but at the end of the day. It, it needs to come to you guys to, to, um, uh, explore the issues as, as have been brought up. I want to see the background to this is that the Norwich Farmers Market is one of the most successful farmers markets in the state of Vermont. Uh, it's one of the oldest. It's more than 40 years old. The challenge that the market is facing is, uh, a few things. One is that it's become so successful that people are choosing not to come because of the parking. Um, as some of you may know, the land is owned by the co-op and the farmer's market leases the land. The co-op is aware that we're exploring, uh, this option. They've, they've, they've been terrific about that. Um, the other issue is that the space that the vendors are in is very confining. And so if you've been to the market, you'll know some vendors have ten foot wide booths, some have eight. And it's, it's, it's very tight and we have no option to expand. So we have a parking problem. We have a vendor room problem. It's not that we want to add lots more vendors. We just want it to be more. A little more elbow room. And then finally along Route five. There are water issues. Now we sometimes have drought, uh, summers, but often those vendors along the Route five. Are, you know, in the mud because of, of the water there. Um, that's the summer market. The challenge with the winter market is Tracy Hall isn't big enough and there is no parking. And this is at the same time that a lot of our farms are going to the next generation. And the next generation has been incredibly savvy about tapping USDA dollars. And, and others to become more year round, extending their shoulder seasons so that they're growing crops. But they, the, the, the market, the, the, the winter market, we don't have the dates that we, as many dates as we need. It's not enough space and the parking is a problem. So trying to have a more legitimate winter market would make an extraordinary impact. Um, for, uh, the, the, the farms in the upper valley. And, um, so that's, those are, that's the pressure that drew us to say. Can we relocate? What you may also be aware of is that both in Burlington, and I think there was another state. Farmers markets were at risk because the town, uh, moved the land. The co-op has been great to us, but we're at the mercy, if you will. Of that lease that renews every five years. So there's a real sense that it's time for the farmer's market to kind of control its own destiny. The, the nice thing about this piece of property is it's, it's just shy of 35 acres, roughly 50% of it is wood. If you were looking at it from, as though you were at the farmer's market to the back, if you look forward. There are sections that are wetland, but there is enough. O- open field that would be able to accommodate the parking. The summer market and so, some, you know, visually appropriate building to house the, the winter market. So that's in a nutshell, hopefully, um, the why we're pursuing this.
Change the rule. Something can do if we think if they should.
I can, Ernie, are you chiming in or?
No, 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 I was. We have another member of the public listening.
Oh, okay. Um. Okay. With that background, I would open it up to commission members' thoughts, conversation. Jeff and then Chris?
Uh, yeah, knowing a lot about.
Uh, yeah, knowing a lot about the parcel. Co-op parcel, the Dresden parcel. Uh, and hey, Peter Raymond, Jeff Goodrich, you look a lot younger than Nate. I just wanted to. Say hi again.
I appreciate that.
Uh, sorry, sorry for this, the sidebar. Anyway, uh, I, I think. There's a ton of stuff to discuss with respect to this. I'm a huge farmer's market fan. I, I understand constraints, I can understand concerns on the Dyke property. This planning commission talked about regional considerations, uh, you know, sustainable communities. Uh, where we live, walk, shop, house, you know, yada, yada, where the utilities are. I think all that needs to be thrown on the table with respect to how we consider this. In the context of. Changing our zoning, among other things, on that parcel specifically, there are a lot of wetlands. Uh, the entire front is, is uh prime ag soils, deer yards. So when I look at act two fifty, I don't care what's proposed there. Uh, there, there's got to be an issue with that addresses uh open space, deer yards. Yeah, and a whole bunch of other considerations in that regard. Anything that's done on that property is going to be very difficult because of the site constraints. I'm not trying to undermine uh this proposal, but I would say. Hey, look, in the context of our regional needs. Where we interface with our adjacent communities, let's take this up and uh. And, and talk about how we modify our zoning going forward.
Mm hmm. Thank you. Chris?
I'm totally in agreement with, with Jeff because um, you know, obviously years ago when the proposal to. Drop some condos on there, all of this, we've been talking about this for years. And I guess here, I. It's really interesting. That I'm not actually quite sure. What the steps would be to actually want to change. I mean, the, the land hasn't been per, I, I know we probably can't discuss it, but the land hasn't been purchased yet. And so. At what point do, does the planning commission actually say, yes, we are willing to go ahead and propose the idea of changing. The zoning to accommodate something like that. And I'm, everything Jeffrey, Jeff said, I'm a hundred percent behind it. I think it's. He, he nailed it. But what I want to know is the logistics of it. Um, at what point, you know, if you guys want to buy the parcel. The, does the zoning get changed beforehand and is it, is the zoning change contingent upon? The purchase of this, or if we change the zoning. And then the landowner now suddenly has a commercial lot and they don't sell it to you. Then what? So.
Well, to be, to be clear, sorry, sorry, Chris, just to, just to clarify, you know, I think. The one, one idea on the table would be. And it's definitely not to rezone the property that, that I don't think we're, we're proposing. Changing this to industrial zoning or commercial zoning.
Right, right, right.
Simply the, the bare minimum would be to add a conditional use to. An allowed conditional use to the rural residential district. That is called farmer's market and then have a definition of farmer's market that. Uh, you know, we, we all could agree on then now, and it's.
Yeah, yeah.
And it would be across the town, meaning if somebody's in rural residential next door to me. In rural residential and wants to put in a farmer's market, then it's now an allowed use. That comes before the DRB and act two fifty and, and, and. To deal with the specific logistics, so that the kinds of things like deer yards and traffic and wetlands and so forth. That are specific to parcel would, would go through the permitting process. And that, that's separate from the planning commission saying, what do we do? With zoning bylaws that at least give this a, a way in. Um, I'm gonna, Ernie and then Jeff. Sorry, Jeff, Ernie was there.
Uh, well, basically you said what I was going to say, so. Um, I went to pull my hand now.
Okay, yeah.
I, I think that's, I think that's the, the right thing to do is, is it's not really changing the zoning, it's. Just making uh a, a conditional use or something like that. Um, and instead of a wholesale change, and that allows us also flexibility later on to, if for some reason this can't, can't come to fruition. We can still prevent it from turning into a strip mall.
Yeah. Jeff?
Can, can I finish my point though?
Right, yeah, please. Sorry, sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Well, no, because I, I'm going back and again, I, I didn't. I don't, I'm not sure, quite sure. I, I get the whole idea of having conditional use, I. Et cetera, et cetera. My question to you would be, or to the planning commission is. If you go ahead with conditional use, and, and I'm sorry, I'm using you guys as an excuse. I'm just saying, you know, thirty years down the road. Uh, you now have parking for, you, you've made an amended, amended parking space, you know, you have fifty parking. I mean, I'm assuming you guys are going to need at least fifty parking spaces. But then you're also going to have a building. And then the building is, you know, is it a sit down restaurant? And then you have to start asking those questions. It's going to be. Is it, what is the structure? I'm asking you these questions because I'm actually not familiar. It, it's, it, I, and I would like to know what the process is. Once you grant conditional use, you now have that building and that structure there. And if, for example, it doesn't work, now you've changed the zoning. And it is rural residential. So. I, I, I just would like to know what happens with the conditional use. Is there somewhere, you know? Is it something that is fixed for a business? Or in a town can actually say, yes, as long as this business exists? Or is it going to be, you know, conditional use for? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to repeat myself, but is it conditionally used just for this particular business? Or does it, once you change the conditional use, is it permanent? So if the.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good.
Years from now, you know, fifty years from now, that building will exist with fifty parking lots. So. I, I guess that's just.
Yeah, that's a, it's a good question. It's a good question. Let me, let me try and, and phrase it and then I'll, I'll hand it to maybe Jeff and, and ask him to. Try to answer the question depending on what he wants to say after it too. But I, well, I think what you're asking, and I'm curious myself is. So if. The, a, you know, a, a blanket change is made to allowable uses in a rural residential. And then a specific project. Uh, goes and is successfully permitted on a specific site. And makes amendments, you know, upgrades the site. And then at some point in the future. Goes away and then you have a site or either they're trying to sell it. Uh, um, my assumption would be a new permitting process is then required. For the potential new owner of the site. To whether they want to put a farmer's market or a wedding venue or something. They would have to get permitted and they would be running under rural residential conditional use constraints. And Jeff.
That's what would be my question.
Yeah, so Jeff or anybody who can, can help with that and Peter's nodding, so maybe.
So Jan, the request before us is, would you consider planning commission changing the zoning to accommodate farmer's market in the RR district?
Mm hmm.
Uh. All that that entails, that it's really that simple. So we can put that on a future agenda item. I, I'd rather not spend a lot of time talking about this and how I want to open a pig farm next to Amy and Jan's house. Uh, that, which has nothing to do with this request, by the way.
It's a wetland right next to our house. You can't do anything.
Pigs love wetlands, I'm telling you.
True, true.
Uh, with Jay Van Armond, but anyway, and Phil Wheeler. Uh, so it's, it's really simple. Let's put this on the agenda going forward. Do we want to think about changing our zoning to accommodate? Uh, a farmer's market in the RR district and what are the implications without regard to this site? Uh, and, and I, and I feel badly for making specific references to the site. It's what, what we're talking about has, as you said, implications for our town, townwide zoning.
Agreed, yeah, it would have, from the planning commission's point of view, we are not going to. Do something special for this project and this parcel. That, that's clearly not the way it works. We would be looking at a, at a town. We obviously have it in mind and know that it would help this. But it has to make sense at a townwide uh zoning bylaws wide red level. Ernie?
Um, well, I was just thinking to, to, to comment on the, the idea of, of. A conditional use. I mean, if we, we say, I'm just going to use as an example, we say. An, a, a conditional use for rural residential areas is going to be farmer's market. Then. It's always going to be farmer's market until that's changed for whatever reason. And it would, again, neutrally, so that it doesn't consider it's not being changed just for a single project. It would be change, you know, we're changing it because we want to, i- if we change it, we're changing it because we want to encourage. A particular kind of business in the town. Um, not just at that location, but in other locations that are similar to it. Um, and. Um, and that, that's, that's, that's a valid thing, but that's the only use. That that condition permits, for instance. I mean, usually when you see conditional uses, you see a list of uses that are conditional and a list that are permitted for a particular place. And, and, you know, so. I don't know what are, what, what other conditional uses are already on rural residential. Um, and I don't think there are any or many, but this might be the first one and it wouldn't, you know, if we think that it's, it's, it's a viable thing that's. Come, uh, works well with. With rural residential applic, otherwise for rural residential locations. Then, you know, we would just make this one conditional use and it means people have to ask and the only thing they can ask for. Based on that conditional use is this particular purpose. And that's it. So it's, it's a relatively simple concept, actually.
Right.
And, and, and the reason we have to do it across the board is simply because, you know, it, it avoids takings and other kinds of nonsense arguments.
Hmm, Jeff?
Yeah, Jan, as a point of order, uh, I, I'd like to move this to a future discussion and stop contemplating our navels and talking about it.
Okay, I mean, I think that's, that's all I wanted to achieve with this, this first round was to get it in front of people as an idea. I. Personally, in terms of the project specifically, I think it's, it's a wonderful idea and if, if we can, uh, you know. We lean to look at it. At the appropriate level of the planning commission, which is we are a townwide body that makes. Regulations and so forth that affect the whole town. Um, and that's, that's the way we will look at it. But uh, I think we, I just wanted to get it in front of you and to see if there was enough interest. To say, yeah, we would think about that. Um, and if that, if that is the sense of the group, then by all means, we will. Have it that, that's so, is it valid to then say the, the agenda item? That we would put on would be specifically. Uh, the proposal to amend the zoning bylaws or to include. Farmer's market as a conditional use in rural residential. I mean, is it, are, are we far enough along? To have that be the agenda item or should we back up a step or two uh and not? Uh, not go that far. Jeff?
Yeah, so Jan, we're contemplating town plan. Uh, navels and other orifices, and if this is going to be a priority, we should decide that as opposed to which other. Priorities we want to address. So there's a whole bunch ahead of this. I'm not taking a posture with respect to paradigm. But as we want to look at the town plan zoning issues, this should be thrown into the bucket. And by all means, let's put it on the agenda. Where does this show up with respect to our priorities?
Agreed, agreed. Can I just ask, and I, I definitely agree and I, I, I think we've gotten uh what we need in terms of visibility to the PC and. Feedback from the PC. I guess I would just ask Peggy. Uh, for a piece of information that would help to Jeff's point around priority. Um, from your, the general arc of this project. Uh, in, in your mind, from schedule point of view. Is, i- is this something that, you know, oh my God, if, if we don't. Have certainty that we can get it zoned in the next two months, then we're dead in the water, or is this a year long arc to? Uh, to get anywhere?
There's no question, this is a complicated project that, the, the, the zoning is just one. There's a, a whole set of feasibility that's going to have to be done. Around the wetlands, the act two fifty, there's a lot of moving parts here, but this is a critical one. It, 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 it makes no sense to pull the trigger on a feasibility study around act two fifty if at the end of the day. Where it's a use that's never going to be, that's not going to be permitted by the town. So in, in terms of sequence, we're negotiating to acquire the property with all the conditions it needs. So that's, that is going on and it's, and it's going reasonably well, but this is the other one. Until we know that it can actually uh happen on this. I can't go any further. We can't go any further forward. So I have two things, trying to close on the PNS. And finding out if the town is amenable uh to this um project. Those are, those are the two. In order of business priority, it's, we can't move forward without knowing it's doable.
Yes, so Jan, we're, we're two years out minimum, even if we decided to go forward, given the select board construct, assuming. The next select board would be amenable to whatever we suggest. Then it might be four, five, six years out.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I, I guess all I would say right now is I think we've, we, we have put it on the table. We've heard from Peggy in terms of the. Her advocacy for priority and I think the, it's, it's the commission's. Uh, task to put it in the list with the other things and. Uh, decide uh what order we want to do things. Um, I do think that, that it can. Uh, in speaking about this with, with Peggy, it's, you know, you, you kind of push, push the most uncertain item forward until it's not the. Tall pole in the, and then park that one and move the next one. So it's not, um. It's not as if she needs the bylaws changed within six months. Um, but if there is some. Uh, reduced uncertainty in that specific area, then that, you know, if, if she, if we had. Talked to the, to the commission tonight and, and people had said, no way, we're not, you know. Who cares about a farmer's market? We're not, we don't think this is a good idea at all. We're never changing the bylaws for it. That would be a piece of information, but not, you know, this, that's not what we're hearing. And I think the idea is. Let's talk about um how it fits with our other priorities and is there a way? If we are supportive to somehow send that message strongly enough so that they can move on with other things without. Such a high degree of uncertainty on, on the permitting side.
And what I'm trying to bring to the forefront is if we decide this is a priority. And we're going to jump over everything else, we're going to go through the select board, make the public hearing processes occur. We're more than a year, year and a half out. And so that's how far out this possibility is, I think. Could be wrong.
I agree.
Just to inform what it is we're going to do.
Yep. I think uh for now, I would take that all under. Uh, and say, all right, we've, we've. Done what we've needed to do tonight and I, and we will bring it up. Again, shortly with just the planning commission on its. Focus task, because I do think over the next couple of meetings, we, we really need to, to Chris's point. Kind of turn the corner from. Keeping lists of what we'd kind of like to work on to pulling a few things off the list, deciding what they are and. And, and doing some things. Uh, and so we, we will be. Uh, looking at our next quarter or two and saying, what are the highest priority activities? And we have enough background on this now to. Include that in the discussion. Okay, Chris?
Um, so I.
So I definitely want to see this on the agenda. But can we, again, I'm, there are so many parts of this, like Jeff said, I, I do see this being a long process, but a really worthy one. That tying the whole town plan, the idea of a farmer's market, but then juxtap- not juxtapose, whatever word it is that I'm trying to come up with, a new building in a residential area with a lot of parking, more traffic on route five. It just, it seems like a really great opportunity for us to, to look at this. But I guess I would say on the agenda, rather than sort of having the sort of amorphous, you know, discussion about it, I, I, I would kind of encourage us to sort of think, you know, what, what are the first couple of steps in in the approach to something like this? What, what is going to be than just getting into these roundtable discussions of, yeah, we'd love a farmer's market there. What, what is the, the, the critical steps that, that lead us to that kind of decision? So I'm not quite sure what you, how you would put it on the agenda. You know, what is the first step that, that it takes to make a, a decision or, or to, to come up with a focus for where you start?
Yeah, I know. I, I do want to, I do want to move on and I hear you, Chris, and I think that's the, the question that will come up right away when we have, you know, and I think the topic appropriately for the planning commission is proposal to amend zoning bylaws to include, you know, farmer's market as a condition. It, it, it can't be specific to this project to be appropriate to the planning commission. Other than we have knowledge off in the side of our head that says this will enable this project. So we're not going to talk about, is there a deer yard on this site or how do we deal with primag on this site? That's, that's not the conversation that'll be in front of us. That's the DRB's job and act fifty board's job and so forth when reviewing a specific permit application. But it is a very good question to say, how do we look at the list of things that has come up in front of us for proposed amendments to, you know, we had, we had a belief blower complaint, can you please update your zoning ordinance to, to your noise ordinance to do something, you know, so what are the priorities for those proposed pieces of work that are planning commission appropriate? And I think that's, it's an important piece of work in the coming month or two. Okay? All right. Well, thank you, Peggy. Thank you, Peter. We will reach out as needed and it will certainly be warned. Anything that's on the agenda, you'll see the, the warned agenda in plenty of time to come talk to us again. You bet. Okay. All right. And it, it is, I, I would just like to say in general that this is, you know, I do want to take the opportunity over the next couple of meetings to, to plan out, parse out the jobs we have in front of us and decide. We, we had some conversations about how to use subcommittees to do specific tasks. The solar citing subcommittee has said specifically they want to work on creating an enhanced energy plan. So we, I think we need to be concrete and say, here are the 10 things on the list. We're going to do those three first and here's, and, and knock them out and get some things done. And because we're dealing with whether it's the public or the select board, you know, you may kick something over to the select board and then have two or three months to work on other things because it's got to get into their queue. So let's, let's be very cognizant of, of, on our list coming up is planning for that sort of thing. Which is a, a good segue into the topic of staff in the sense that if we can get some help doing this, then we will be able to accomplish more. Or at least that's certainly my hope. So as an update to the candidate search, when we had our last meeting, and that was on Tuesday, and the deadline for applicants was the subsequent that, that same Friday, and I reported in the meeting that we had no applicants at the time of the meeting. By the time of the deadline, we had multiple applicants. We, and so, and, and very qualified applicants, which I took to be very, very good news. And that is the, the current situation is that we will do what I would call screening interviews of several and then come back to the planning commission with a proposed, could be one or two proposed candidates. Most likely to keep this moving, we would need a special meeting before the February thirteenth meeting. Cause we don't, if, if we had somebody that we wanted to make an offer to and, and hook them, then we're not going to want to wait a month to, to talk about it and, and be able to give the planning commission's endorsement to a candidate. So I would, I would just say that to the board that, that we will be doing those screening interviews. And then the board, the commission should expect a special meeting. Call it two weeks from now or something where we would then, I think, go into executive session to, if we're discussing bouncing around specific candidates and pros and cons for that, for that conversation. So that's, that's the status right now on candidates. Chris?
Linda asking you, oh. So, so can you, there are a couple can, there are a couple of things that I just want to clarify. Who actually, is it the planning commission? When you say go into executive, is it the planning commission or the town manager who is actually going to do the hiring, offering of the job?
The offer, the, the, any of the HR conversations around here's a, here's an offer, here's a contract, here's a, you know, negotiation around hiring will be the town manager. This is
But who actually picks the candidate? Okay. So who actually is choosing?
The final, the final decision to offer the job will be the town manager. And, and I would say I would report that as a very concrete statement out of Jack Cannon. Uh, when we had the, the three of us sitting down to talk about this, where, where Jack was, you know, he's like, there's no, there's no debate here. This is a town manager form of government. The town manager is hiring this person. They're hiring this person to specifically do planning and zoning activities, but the person reports to the town manager and they are the hiring manager. That was, that was Jack's comment in a, in a recent hiring committee conversation.
And, and currently it was, it was you and Jack and
Brennan. And then Miranda sat in as the, kind of the HR person who's working on personnel policies.
Okay. And so when you said that the planning commission was going to go into executive, to do what?
Well, I think we had, as, when we talked about this, and, and in the group that was with, with Jack that was talking this through, the, the, the commitment was to come back to the planning commission. So that if we had several candidates, we would do the screening and then we would come back to the planning commission to, to, to talk through those candidates so that there was some level of support and endorsement and conversation at the planning commission level to feed into that final decision as, as input to the final decision. So my understanding of HR policy and so forth is that if, if we as a public group are talking about so-and-so, this candidate, oh, I don't like their education or they don't have this skill or something, that that kind of person-specific HR conversation is supposed to be done in executive session. So that's, and then you come out of executive session and say, we support or endorse this candidate and, and give that input into the, the town manager's activity. That's, that's my understanding.
Okay. But in the meantime, the vetting of the candidates as the resumes come in currently is just you and Brennan?
Now it is because we lost Jack. Yes. And the DRB specifically, Pat, Patrick, the chair of the DRB chose, he, he was asked whether the DRB wanted to put in another person as a representative into that conversation to take Jack's place. And Patrick said he didn't feel the need.
So how many, can you tell us how many resumes you guys received?
Four.
Okay. And does that include Ernie?
Yes.
Okay. Ernie, yeah, go ahead, Ernie.
Oh, well, well, did Linda pull her hand out? Okay. I have a lot of problems with this entire process. I have, I, I have actually a prepared thing I was going to read. I'm not quite sure. I should or not. I may. But um, what I see, the first problem I see is Jack is wrong. First of all, the statutes clearly specifies that a planning director belongs in a municipal, I mean, a, a, an urban municipality that has a, a planning department. And the professional director runs a professional depart- We have, it's, it's, it's not whether we have a town manager form of government. That's not the point. It's that we have, we still have a government of mostly volunteers. And that includes a planning commission. The planning commission's job, first off, is to choose the candidate who's going to, is, is to choose the candidates who will be hired, not the town manager. Because the town managers, the town manager is not answerable to the town. He's answerable to the state. The state law, the, the, the actual statute that authorizes a town manager says that he, he is at the pleasure of the select board, but the select board has to have cause to terminate him without, while the, because there's nothing in the law that says cause, what cause is, there's no way to actually control, the, the select board has no way to control a town manager. The town manager becomes, as we have seen in this town, the town manager leads the select board, not the other way around. And in this particular case of the, the planning commission, we will end up with a planning director, which is, again, that's a violation, calling a planning director is a violation of statute. We cannot do that. It's, it's just simply wrong. We don't have a planning director because we have a planning commission. Now, if we want to get rid of the planning commission, yeah, let's get a planning director and let's be open about the fact that we want to professionalize the entire government of this, of Norwich and get rid of all the volunteers, which is what we're doing. Yeah. Rod did not listen to the select, to the planning commission. It was the other way around that with him. He, he, he was, he became, he was, first of all, the definition of defining him as planning director took place totally covertly. All of a sudden, he's just suddenly the planning director. I have no idea how that decision was made. As he had originally been the zoning administrator. Suddenly we have a planning director. And when I asked, how did we get that? They said, well, the select board voted on it and there was no answer as to when, can't find, I could never find it in the record or anything like that. But we never, ever, ever, at every point when he was the zoning, the, the, the planning director, we were constantly led by him. And all this planning commission did was nibble around the edges of what he, when it came to, let's say, for instance, the, the regulations. All we do is nibble around the, the edges and yes or no, what he wrote. We never actually made real decisions. And then of course, it was brought to the, to, to the, to the select board and then, you know, the, the, the town managers. Now, we also have really an aggressive town manager at this point. I know for a fact that the guy is not happy with me for two reasons. One, because I've been criticizing the fact that he had no prior experience as a town manager before he was hired at a rate that is far higher or, or at least among the highest in the twin states. For a town manager who's never, wait, wait, I'm not done. And he's no more qualified for that job than I was.
Ernie, I have to, I have to say, you know, the conversation here is not around the town manager, the town manager's qualifications. That is not the
I, I understand, I understand that, but it's a matter of fairness and equal treatment. Okay. For instance, one person was eliminated from this whole pile, this candidates peremptorily, no, no, in interview or anything like that, just simply, nope. That, that is not proper. It was, there should have been at least an interview. There wasn't. Second of all, we have a small
Ernie, I can't, Ernie, I can't comment on an HR conversation about candidates, but
expecting. That's not
But I, but the, the fairness conversation and the bringing in the town manager qualifications as a comparison is not appropriate.
Let me move on. We haven't, I think we have an, an open meetings violation here because we have a little tiny group. They're dealing with information that everybody in the town needs to know because these people are going to have a big effect on their taxes and on their on the way they, they, they live in the town. So all of a sudden, there's a big privacy issue that I think is fabricated here. Their qualifications, they probably published their public, their qualifications on the internet. And, 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 you know, among other things. So for, so for, so for their, you know, it's one thing for, there's, there is no, been no transparency at all in this little group. And that little group includes a town manager. It doesn't include any other of the volunteers. But I want to stick with the fact that we're the people, the planning commission is the people that picks the person, not the town manager. That's our job. He yes or no's it and we go back and, and, and continue, but he doesn't
I want to acknowledge, Ernie, and, and I, I hear you and I understand this is, this is not, this is not an easy task. And we're trying to pull apart the things that are appropriate for the planning commission and the, the context we have to work in. But I do, one of the complexities we have here is what you're saying around planning commission role and the official statutory nominate a, a, a position or a set of responsibilities is around the ZA, is the zoning administrator part of this job. Now the complexity and I've, and I've had this conversation with Brennan and with Jack when he was there. What we have done is combined to, the, the zoning administrator does not stand alone in this conversation. And so the, the statutory requirements and guidelines are, are really for roughly half of the position that we're talking about. And so I just have to acknowledge that complexity. It doesn't, it, it doesn't solve it, but it isn't, it is not valid to say that the planning commission is solely, just like we, we would be if this, if this was a halftime purely ZA job, you would have a different responsibility. You would have a different responsibility relative to PC and, uh, hiring and nominating.
But my question is, is what has become so complex over the 15 years I've been involved? With planning and zoning and all the rest of the stuff in this town. I'm not talking about me as a candidate. I'm talking about. The, the, the ability for the planning commission to do the job. I don't see. Any real outrageous complexity to this job that wasn't here 15 years ago. And I don't expect is going to be here in the future. The town's not growing super rapidly. Um, it, like it was when, for instance, Charlie Welch was, was, uh, the zoning administrator, um, 30 years ago. Um, it is, the, the, the laws are not so complex. If the laws are that complex, then you should be hiring a lawyer, not somebody who's got some sort of. Unity, you know, uh, college. Degree in, in, in forestry or something, you know, um, and then sides, he's going to be a, a, a zoning administrator or a planning director or whatever. Um, you know, I'm not seeing the complexity here. To me, this is really straightforward stuff and I, and, and I think. You know, at one point, somebody, I don't think it was you, but somebody said that the reason we call it a planning director is because we're looking to get the highest. Quality person we can get to take the position. Now, from my point of view, a planning director, if you call, say he's a planning director, he's going to think he's a planning director, is, or she is going to think they're a planning director. And we're going to end up with somebody that's not going to be listening to the planning dir- commission. We're going to either be forced to. We're gonna, we're either gonna be in conflict with them, or we're gonna have to subordinate ourselves to them. Neither of those are a good option. And that's why I think that, you know, you can call them, it, it doesn't, the title doesn't matter unless what you're trying to do is trick somebody into thinking it's, the job is something it's not. And if you're not trying to trick them into thinking something it's not, then you are actually trying. And I'm not saying you, but this town is attempting to. Sort of decimate the purpose of the, the, uh, the planning commission. And I think that that's, and there is, there has shown to be, there's been a, a long, it's been slowly but surely happening. A, a move of getting rid of volunteers in this town and replacing them with professionals answerable. In the usual corporate hierarchy that town manager and all the rest forms. So this is, this is, this is not a good move for us to make or for us to agree to. I think that we should remain a strong planning commission. The, the guy is gonna have, or the woman is gonna have to answer to the town manager for HR purposes, no matter what. Because that's, that, that, you know, matrix management is how this works. But for us to be sort of just some sort of. Sitting around waiting for the planning director to tell us what to do. That's wrong and that's, that's not what people sign up for to do these kinds of things. We want to have control of our, of our own town. This is a way of.
I mean, I, yeah, I, I really think that I understand, uh, what you're saying, Ernie and Jeff, I'll, I'll get to you in a second. I just want to point out personally, as the, as the person who's been at this for a number of months now. And has been putting a great deal of, of time and effort to try to substantively, you know, to really get stuff done. And try to move some things forward. I am, I am not. Uh, uh, planning on, and I hope I have shown that I'm not planning on letting. The town manager tell us how to do planning, you know, that, that I am very aware of the need to. Have a strong voice of townspeople who are the ones leaving the bus here. And I have no intention of rolling over and letting somebody tell us what's going on. So. I, I hear your concerns, um, but personally, with my view of what. Is going on, both with the town manager and the planning. Topics that I have been working on over these months. And, um, it, it, it is not gonna roll over, uh, in the, in the. Scenario that you're talking about. I, I'm not gonna let that happen. Jeff?
Uh, yeah, I have a bunch to say. I'll try and be concise. So I take offense to the notion that town has engaged professionals. Because the town has not engaged a single professional other than Larry Wiggins, who is a licensed professional engineer. There is no other professionalism in gate, been engaged by this town in a staff position. So let us disabuse ourselves with respect to the term professional. This town does not want professionals involved. In staff positions. Or in critical positions that may benefit this community. To Ernie's point about O M L, that's a great point. I actually agree with largely most of what Ernie said, except for talking about Brennan, because it's not material. And I'd like to note that there's been information disclosed tonight that I'm not aware of and I don't think Vince is or Bob is. So I, I would say, you know, what the heck? W T H. Uh, I, I don't know candidates, who's been, you know, who's a candidate, who's not a candidate. So I'm going to reiterate, um, my agreement with Ernie's concerns about the role of a zoning administrator. Rather than the, uh, what's the right word? The heifer dust, the so is the planning director. It's all horse hockey. It's all road apples. It, it's not a complicated paradigm. So my biggest concern over and over and over again is why won't this town engage? People to interview and select folks who actually have experience. Jan, you don't have that experience. Brennan doesn't have that experience. Jack had a little bit of that experience. So at this juncture, whoever comes before the planning commission, I'm going to vote no on. Because I haven't been involved in the hiring process that the planning commission in the past was involved in with respect to things like this. So it'd be my expectation to see all the, uh, resumes, to interview all the candidates. And to make a decision based on actual knowledge. And, and, and with all due respect, John, I mean, I love you, you know, I did. I, I don't know Brennan enough to love him yet. But neither of you have the knowledge. You, you simply don't have the knowledge or experience to, to shortlist or pick or et cetera. Uh, the town has done this over and over again. Let's get the guy pushing the wheelbar, wheelbarrow. Let's get the gal picking the, you know, the weeds out of the garden. That's how we're gonna pick the next person who's gonna run this subcommittee. Or who's gonna run this department. You know, I, 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 I would hope that we could transition into a place where we actually give a crap about this dang town. Based on people with real experience and knowledge. And that ain't happening based on what I'm hearing.
Well said, Jeff.
This is, this is horse hockey, pure horse hockey.
Well, Jeff, for one thing, I would point out, I'm, I'm a little, I'm. I'm confused somewhat by your statement, or how do we? How do we reconcile the fact that we're talking about? Lay groups of people. By definition, the planning commission, the zoning board, the select board are. Townspeople that may have been the farmer or the plumber or the doctor coming in to. Volunteer for the town. So they will not have the kind of experience you're talking about. But they will be asked to do their part for the town.
Right foul. So why would you exclude a heart surgeon from selecting the next heart surgeon? That's what's going on here. There are people in this community that have the knowledge. And this process has been so bogus, other than Jack. And, and you know, to your credit, you, you have some related experience. This town has chosen committee member, physician member, et cetera, over and over again, without consideration of people with real knowledge. So I, I, I'm gonna refute, so I've said from day one on this front, I've agreed with Ernie with respect to what the, the V S A say. And said, hey, I want to be a part of this because I know this is my profession. This is what I do. I'm a licensed professional. I've got tens, like, you know, I've got 15,000 projects and 40 years under my belt. But I can't be involved because of that fact.
I don't agree with the way you're phrasing it, Jeff, in terms of what, why. Your, why you can't be involved or the kind of involvement and the kind of hiring process that's going on. I'm looking at the. The situation in this town relative to. The type of town government, the, the, the candidates that we got, I am, if I. Can't, I would not, for example, if you, if you're talking about the information that was disclosed today that other people don't know. If what you're saying is, you know, that, that, that Ernie was a candidate. I would not have mentioned that if, if Chris hadn't brought it up, simply because that is. An HR conversation. I don't, I'm not going to tell you the other three names of the candidates or their background because my understanding of. Uh, the, the employment and I have quite a bit of experience in hiring people and HR law and so forth. And you, you know, I can't simply bring up, oh, so and so looks pretty good, except they've got this downside to them and they don't have this education. That's not a conversation that I think is appropriate or should be had in a full, open PC meeting. But I don't share the opinion that. The, the people involved aren't capable of making a positive, uh. Step towards helping the town do these things, that, that somehow there is a, a very narrow band of people that is qualified to. To work on specific topics in this town. I, I think that that's. Uh, I just don't agree with that. And I, I would ask, Ernie, I, I see your hand is up. I would ask, um. Bob or Vince, if you have anything to say, and you've been quiet through this, but I'd like to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. Vince?
I just wondered if you could walk through, again, your. The, the next step of a screening interview and then the special meeting. Would that be after the screening interview, you and Brennan? Uh, as far as what the plan is, as, as you laid it out, would pick one, one candidate? And then what sort of information would we have on that? Or would you, would you present the potential candidates that would be a good fit? You know, kind of like a filtering out.
Um, I, I think it, it depends on. How the, the, I would like to be able to bring multiple, uh, candidates to. To discuss with the planning commission. So there, there are three people, uh, right now that, that are trying to be scheduled. For interviews. Um, if, uh. If that, if, if, if that first round of conversation. Hands out or, or there, there are two that are sort of still viable or clearly, uh, the. The most, uh, well qualified, then I think the, the conversation with the planning commission should, should look at both of those and should put. Resumes and, and, uh, interview notes and things on the table and talk about it. And if. Uh, if the group thinks that that's required, uh, we could talk about whether the, well, some subset of the group. Need, wanted to interview them. Um, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to. Have the entire planning commission, uh, interview the, and interview the finalist or multiple finalists, but. I think it's a question of how the, how those interviews go. It may collapse down to, to one. Uh, preferably at least one, um, before we get back to the planning commission. I don't know. Uh, but that's, that's as I see it right now.
Okay, okay, that makes sense to me.
Bob, you have anything to say?
I, I, I guess I'd just say, yeah, I, I agree that this should not be heading in the direction of a professional form of government. Uh, which I guess I misunderstood some of the arguments before, but, uh, that, uh, it sounds like it's more of a particular. Uh, lack of inclusion on this, uh. I perhaps misunderstood how, uh, how we selected the committee before, but, uh. I thought there was general consensus. We were happy with the, with the selection group, uh, so if I misunderstood that from before, I apologize, but, uh. But yeah, I guess I'm, uh, aware of, uh, more issue than I thought there was.
Yeah, I, I would point, point out that we have been talking about this for a number of months and we had, that's why. The group of the three or four, uh, wrote up the one page thing so that we could bring it back to people and, and talk through. The proposed candidate, uh. You know, the, the short version of who and what we saw this person doing. Um, that's why we did that. That's why we went back and forth with this group. So. Um, that's been going on to Bob's point. There, there's been a reasonable. Conversation and agreement on. The candidate and the hiring process. Coming into this. So I would, uh, I'm all, it's, all right, I'll put it out and let's, uh, Jeff and then Ernie.
Yeah, so Yon, if the question is, I, I, I'm not sure we had. Consensus on what that job is, but that's immaterial. Uh. So if, if at the end of the day, uh, and, and I would suggest to you and Brennan that you might. Add to your subcommittee, if, if you guys are gonna shortlist two or three folks. And, and say, okay, let's present these folks to the planning commission. Uh, I, I can't say I have a problem with it. Uh, at the same time, uh, if I'm gonna do that sort of selection. Uh, I, I'd want to have all the, the, uh. Uh, information about other applicants so I can understand who is considered. Why we arrived at these two or three shortlisted candidates. And then discuss, uh, you know, how we might engage, uh, someone to, to nominate.
Okay, and I. I, I agree with you. I would, I would ask just for the, for the group's opinion for that conversation. Um, is that appropriate to have in executive session?
Yes.
Okay, that was my understanding. I just wanted to confirm that. Um, and I don't, I don't disagree. I don't, I wouldn't. Uh, take away the, the planning commission's, uh, ability to look at, at the full. Uh, basically review the, the hiring committees that the selection, uh, thinking. Uh, and say, okay, here's, here's what we had on the table. Here's why we narrowed it down as we did. Here's, this is what happened in these, these conversations with people, uh, and here's how we got to where we are. I'm. Uh, I would agree to presenting that to the planning commission in, in executive session. And that I would propose is a, is a, uh. Special meeting, uh, probably in about two weeks.
And, and so, Yon, to be clear, to the extent you disclose information in that context. We are all bound to, uh, not disclose what you present to us.
Agreed. So I think what I would, uh, I would just make it clear to the. To the town manager and the, and, uh. Miranda as the HR person to say, okay, here's, here's the proposal that I will come to. Uh, to, to the full planning commission in executive session. With, and I will be giving that group within the context and as you said, the constraints of executive session. I will be giving full background. I will be, I will be. Giving background on all applicants and a, uh, a description of the selection process that got us to. The, the narrowed down version of the candidates and then that would be opened up for discussion. In, in the planning commission. That's, I, I would agree with that. Ernie?
Um, keeping that sort of process, at least part of it. Um, why couldn't you just bring in their resumes? Since we're all, you know, it's in executive session and so on. Bring in all the resumes of all the candidates. You've only got four. So that's not that many for people to digest and. Let people look at the resumes and make up, make up their own minds about the suitability of each of those candidates. I think, I think. E- 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 editing is not necessary when it's so such, originally, when we were, I think, talking about this. Um, the reason we, we had like a screening committee, because I was not really happy. Even with the screening committee at that, at that point, and I don't know, I think I abstained because I was not happy with, with, with this process. Um, what? Um, I'm trying to say is. I was thinking at that time, we were going to have like a fairly large number of, and of course, some of them are going to be facetious and so on. Um, and, and that's reasonable to, you know, we know. Um, and, and that's reasonable to, you know, we know stuff like that. I would not waste anybody's time, but you only got four now, even you know, and everyone waited till the last minute. I'm not quite sure how, you know, because considering that, you know, I don't know how that happened, but that's what happened. Um, so you have four candidates that are real and, you know, um, I think that, that the, that everyone has the right to see for themselves what their qualifications are. And how, what they, what they think their qualifications are and what the qualifications are according to the, um, you know, and I think that they have the right to interview them too. I, I think that that's an important thing as well. I don't think that, um, just a piece of paper, which you can say anything you want on, is the end all. I think every one of them is entitled to, since it's so few, I think they're all entitled to, uh, uh, an interview as well. We're not, I mean, if this is that important, it's worth the time. You know, the other thing I wanted to say just briefly is I think I have to retract my, my, my um, sort of, I'm gonna call it definition of professionals, um, because I think I agree with Jeff. Um, I think the only professional that I have, you know, a professional, if, if I'm thinking of a professional, I think of someone like Jeff. I mean, I think Jeff might be the only professional within the town government right at the moment, in that he's got something that's relevant and he's a professional in, in, in the commit, in the area he's in. I think Jack Cannon was a professional. Of course, he's a lawyer, so technically by definition, he's a professional as well. As am I, but I'm not, that's not my profession relative to that particular committee. You know what I'm saying? Uh, how I'm differentiate, differentiating? Um, I, I'm just withdrawing. Instead of saying professionals, I should say, I don't know what to say, because uh, at the times in this, in, 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 in the changing, when we started first having a town manager, we started referring to it as a privatization of, of the town, um, rather than a, a professionalization. You know, we had to privatize the, the, um, fire department and stuff like that. And I think that was a wrong term, but that was what was used originally, uh, when we hired the first couple town managers. Um, and, you know, and now we're talking about, you know, Z A, public, the, the planning director and all that sort of stuff. We've never had a professional planning director in this town. And we may not get one either.
So let me, I, I think we've
What do you wanna prioritize?
What? I don't understand the question, Jeff.
So we had about five minutes before
Right, right. So what I would like to say is, um, to, to Ernie's point, what I, what I am proposing is that we will, we will look at, we will start uh, with all four resumes on the table with the planning commission in executive session. And we will then, but I will, I am gonna go forward with uh, the, the interviews as scheduled in the next week or two. So, and I will bring that information to the planning commission for that discussion. If, if we wanna jump up and down and say we really, that, that a, a larger group other than just me wants to talk to the person, then I will advocate for that. And we will get that, you know, we will try to make that happen. But for the next steps, I would propose that, that, that I will participate in the screening interviews. And then I will bring this group together. We will start with all four resumes on the table and talk through the what's made, what has gone on, uh, and decide how this group wants to participate. Jeff, then, I'm sorry, Chris, Chris, and then Jeff. Chris, Chris wins by making more motion first.
I had my hand up first, this is like
You did, you did.
No, no, no. I just have a simple, simple question. I have a feeling that in this executive, and I really appreciate, Jan, that you are going to bring all four candidates, um, to our group. But I believe if I'm correct, and I'm not a lawyer, that Ernie is going to have to recuse himself.
I would, I would agree with that, that, and that seems straightforward.
The recusal paradigm, uh, I just wanna be clear, Chris, I was gonna say the same thing. Ernie has to recuse. So, so we can't recuse Ernie. So Ernie, I, I, I'm not gonna yell and scream at you like, uh, folks did back in the O M L days. But I'd like to throw this on the table so that, to the extent you recuse, you're not gonna be included in this pack and information.
Okay.
I, I miss how you said it.
Well, I think to Jeff's point, simply the, the choice to recu, we cannot exclude. The individual needs to personally recuse. And I, I appreciate Ernie's agreement to do that. That is, I think, the appropriate thing to do. And I, I thank you for doing that, Ernie. Um, but it is, you know, it is him bowing out, uh, in, uh,
I hadn't thought of that. I, I, it's a good point, Jeff.
Yeah, so thank you. Um, okay, I would, uh, my preference would be, I think, to not try to bite off a town plan conversation in three minutes here. Um, that's a, that's a bad idea. I, I would just uh, yeah, down Jeff, no. Um, I would, um, propose or at least ask the group to say, you know, I, I think we were using the, the Two Rivers uh, memo in, in kind of a combination with the land use subcommittee uh, floundering a bit and, and needing some help with the charter and uh, ton, it kind of to Chris's topic about how do we get some concrete things off the table and, and moving forward. Um, so we're, we're trying to frame the charter of the land use subcommittee or the, just that topic. And we're using this Two Rivers memo to, to, to start a conversation. But, so that's how I see it. And I, I would just, you know, put that to the group to see if that's a shared view, or if that's, you know, we could say, no, 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 we, we wanna talk about the, how to move forward with looking at our town plan and, and the land use aspects of it. And the Two Rivers memo is, is either a sideshow or the wrong way to go at that. But that's how we bundled them together at the last meeting. And, um, so that's where it stands. I don't think we should open that bundle right now. Given the time, but, uh, I would just bump that um, that same agenda item for that purpose to the next meeting.
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion to bump the rest of the agenda to our next meeting and then, uh, adjourn.
I do not have a problem with that. Does anybody, uh, vehemently?
Just have a question, sorry.
Okay, just a second. Chris and then Ernie.
Question. So are we doing the executive? Just, I, I guess my question is that we've got, sounds like a ton of stuff on our next agenda. So my question
Correct.
The thirteen. So adding an executive to go over all of that seems like a lot. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. Is the rest of the five of us now willing to have a special meeting just to do the executive?
That's the, my, my proposal is that we, that, the, I mean, February thirteenth, we have a solar sighting thing on the, on the agenda. Uh, that is a regular meeting of the full planning commission. Um, the proposal is there are actually two things that will happen before that. One is an executive session of five members of the planning commission to discuss uh, to go over the hiring process for the candidates. That's an executive session that, that could be end of next week, or it could be beginning of the week after, whenever that falls. That's one. And the second is gonna be a public hearing on the affordable housing planning grant. Which will need to be warned as a planning commission meeting and a subcommittee meeting just in case a quorum of each of those groups is in attendance. So that, that doesn't require all six of us to be there, but it will show up on our calendars. And it will need to, and that will also be before the thirteenth. But yes, Chris, I think to your question, I would propose the executive session is a completely separate meeting, special meeting of the planning commission.
You're just saying before?
Before February thirteenth.
I, I, I just make sure if you meant before that, you know, like at five o'clock that day, what you're saying
No, no, I, I mean, two weeks before. I don't, I don't wanna make a, I don't wanna wait a month to be able to give somebody an offer. That's what it comes down to. Okay? All right, we got a motion to adjourn on
Is it inappropriate or inappropriate for, for me to ask Ernie and you? We didn't set a solar sighting committee day. Should we, can we email each other or should we talk?
We can email. Uh, we can talk about it. I'd say do email, but, um, a week from tonight wouldn't, wouldn't kill us. Or if, if we could do it, that would, we've been doing. Or I don't, I don't wanna try to do it now. Let's email. Um, because we have, we have a specific task which is start on planning for an enhanced energy plan. So let's, um, let's, uh, let's email to get a date.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We're sure. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate, I appreciate your efforts and your reasonableness. Good night.
Mine too.
Yes, yours too, Ernie.